Fledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in his soul with liberty and justice for all.
Graham Crisoon?
Here.
Tobin?
Here.
Kleiner?
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
Jean Francois?
Here.
Burr?
Here.
Green?
Here.
Massey?
Here.
President Rodriguez?
Here.
We have a call on?
Approval of minutes?
Tonight we have the minutes from the common council meeting from August 6th, 2018.
Resolutions possible, Massey, second by Jean Francois, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Correspondence?
We received one correspondence today that I put in everybody's mailbox. It was from the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation. There was a notice of public comment period for legislative public hearing, deadline for petitions for party status, and this is for CPV.
Received and filed?
That's all.
For the good of the city, anyone who would like to address his counsel, please step forward. You have four minutes.
Hello, everybody. My name is Pat Foley. Just want to give you a little background on me. I went to work for the city of Middletown on July 1st, 1953. I worked under Sixth Commissioner of Public Works, mostly in the water department. I helped install about forty percent of this city's infrastructure. I have a tremendous amount of knowledge in this area, including the water system. I viewed myself as a public servant then and still feel that way now. One night, nice and warm, I had got my window open with this beautiful breeze coming in from all this hot weather, and in comes this putrid smell that about knocked me right over. The smell got right down into my throat, and I said, "Florchem." Florchem is a chemical plant located at 33 Sprague Avenue. The odor is seven days a week, twenty-four hours a day. Why? The areas that are affected are Sprague Avenue, Lafayette, Prospect, Turtle College, Grand Avenue, East Main, DeBradner, Rodman Street, Washington, Child Street, Academy Avenue, East Avenue. This odor is horrible. It comes right into the house even when you close the windows. When I first smelled it, this back in 2016, I went patrolling that night, and Joe Sierra, ex-alderman, can verify it too, because he smells it. Now, this smells to hang low to the ground. It doesn't dissipate like it's supposed to. I investigated this with the DC Fire Inspector. Commissioner was over there with me, I think it was last year or the year before. They said they wanted to be a good neighbor, that it's safe. The DC went over there. If you're raising small children and you live in this neighborhood, I would move, because they could tell you it's safe, but I don't believe it's safe. Nobody knows. You'll know in ten or fifteen years if your kids get cancer. That's how you know. The city has hired an engineer to monitor air from the new CPV plant on Route 6. Florchem should be monitored too, should be included in that. I called Florchem, and I was speaking with a Trevor Major. He said they work four days a week. After a heated discussion, he said he would investigate and get back to me. It seems like we got a mystery. They work four days a week, and we got the smell seven days a week, twenty-four hours a day, two, three o'clock in the morning. And you've got to be aware of this smell. Once you're aware of it, you'll smell it all the time. I smell it almost every night. Last few days, it wasn't too bad. Back in a while, in 2017, it sort of calmed down for a while. I thought maybe it just, they finished that project, and it was done till that night in the summer with the window open. Every time it comes, you have to close this, you have to close the window. You can't stand the smell. And I live two miles away from the plant. Also, I received a call back from the state's air pollution control engineer, John something or other. He has a couple of engineers checking on CPV, and he has included Florchem for them to check. And I don't know why we can't find out, if they're working four days a week, where this smell is coming from. I think we've got to send somebody there that knows how the plant runs to explain it. They gotta, you know, you can't just send somebody there and somebody, plant manager, stand there and explain stuff to you unless you understand it. You've got to know how that plant operates and wonder why this smell is after. It's twenty-four hours a day. I could put up with it, everybody probably could put up with it for about eight hours if it comes and goes. That's what I told this major. I said, "Well, then we've got a problem. This same smell must be circulating around and coming back again." So that's where we stand right now.
You've got to wrap it up. Your four minutes are up.
You know you're some piece of work.
I'm sorry, I got to give it up.
You are some piece of work. Is that in the code?
Yes.
Big mouth. Is that in the code?
Do I need to rule you out of order?
I don't care if you rule me out of order.
Your four minutes are up.
That gentleman back there yelling at me is four minutes. Where is he? Wayne, right there.
Foley, you're done. Thank you.
You're some piece of work. You're no good for this city either. Tell you right to face. I did have something else, but that'll be for a later date. For the rest of you, thank you.
Anyone else would like to address the council? Point of order. Okay, moving for the department heads, economic development.
Good evening, everyone. Just an update on the department, what's going on. Our community development block grant, as you know, we do small business loans and housing rehab. We currently have four properties that are being rehabbed throughout the city. We closed on a small business loan, and we'll be announcing that opening in a matter of a couple weeks. Also, for the CDA, the Community Development Agency, we're going to be starting on one of the houses in the next few weeks as well. So that's all moving along. Summer concerts, we're wrapping up this Friday, so there's one more concert, and that's Jenna Esposito and her family. So come on down. We've got one more Friday. Movies are still going strong at the Paramount. Eileen program, a sci-fi weekend that's coming up, and Harathon weekend, so, you know, join us at the Paramount. Check out our website, city website, Paramount website, see everything that's going on. That's all I have for this evening.
Any question for Maria?
Thank you.
Maria, fire chief?
Good evening, everybody. Kind of a busy month, ninety-two calls for the month, and we'll be involved with the community events with Tutter Truck and the Promenade having their car show on the fifteenth, I believe it is, and we'll have fire trucks there for the elderly people to look at. That's it.
Any question for the fire chief? Thank you, chief. Police chief?
Good evening. Just a couple of quick things to address. Just like to recognize Officer Kristen Beebe. She just completed the third junior police academy for the summer. It was a great success. The program grew quite a bit this year. Had a lot of participants. This is our third year running it, and each year it does grow a little bit more. Also, she had two people that helped her through all three of the events. Travis Brogan and Dylan Sparling donated a lot of their time. They are employees of the city, but they put a lot of time and effort into it, so I'd like to recognize them as well. And I'd like to thank all the participants and the volunteers that partook in the junior police academy. It is a great asset to the community and gives us a great opportunity to interact with the youth. Tomorrow, school starts, so please, residents, be careful on your travels. Kids will be, students will be walking to and from school, crossing the streets. Watch for the students, watch for the buses, watch the flashing lights. Just be vigilant. Give yourself a few extra minutes for travel time to accommodate for the school traffic. Also, with school year starting off tomorrow, we have the four SROs in the four public schools, the high school Twin Towers, Presidential Park, and the Truman Moon Annex Schools. We're very excited that we're able to come to an agreement on that, and we'll have representation within the school district. I think it's a win all the way around for everybody. Lastly, I'd like to just wish the students a successful and safe school year.
Any questions for the chief? Thank you, chief. DPW Commissioner?
Good evening, council president, council members, mayor. Before you tonight, you have like three different resolutions, at least for DPW. One of them is hiring, surveying for the courthouse in order to get the topography and the meets and bounds for federal courthouse in an effort to convert it to city court, and that project is moving along. The consultant is BNL, and the surveyor is Fusco Engineering. The second resolution is to hire the surveyor, which is Fusco Engineering, to do the meets and bounds and the topography for Route 211 Fields in there, which is the expansion of Davidge Park. And the third resolution, which is kind of important, that's for the Elm Street water line and curbs and sidewalks. As a result of that sewer line project, we have a change order negotiated with the contractor, Boyce Excavation, an amount of $377,000, and the numbers are okay, and the board of estimate has approved it. We're not sure if we need to bond it separately, fund it separately or not. EFC has not gotten back to us. So this resolution before you tonight, just in case we have to fund it and increase the bonding limit for the project, whether it is under state revolving fund, or if the city chooses to fund it by a separate bond, or possibly fund it, fund the water line through the water balance, water fund balance. So these are the options that are still available for us, but we just want to be ready, because we sincerely regret how late, how long this Elm Street has been opened up with the dust and the stone, and now we're at, we want to wrap it up as soon as possible. So that's why we're doing all these funding resolutions in order to get that Elm Street closed up, new curbs and sidewalks and water line, and a new pavement. With that, I will shift gear and just remind people, we are an old city. We have a lot of problems with inflow and infiltration. We call it INI during rain or storm event. And some people, without knowing the law, they have sump pumps connected to our sanitary sewer, and that is illegal. It causes us a lot of problems in the city of Middletown. That's when you see potentially, it could aggravate the situation by adding to sanitary sewer overflows from manholes and so on and so forth. The DEC is very much concerned about that, and we have now to report to DEC every six months about the progress that we are making to minimize the INI and the sewer overflows. So we urge residents to check and double-check, please, on their sump pumps, to make sure there is no rain, stormwater, downspouts from the roof, or any, or even groundwater connected to the sanitary sewer. We will be taking enforcement against the people who are doing it, so please help us out. And code enforcement has been looking for that. The people who we found have been cooperating. Some people have not. We're going to have to pursue court action because the city's own affairs are in question if we don't minimize the situation. And regarding the Florchem, Mr. Foley was talking, he was a little bit emotional about the situation. It's true that a couple of years ago, we went, we pursued it. Florchem installed filters, I think for the amount of $15,000, which is really, is none of our concern, but we want to make sure that that odor is controlled and it's not disturbing the neighborhood. And we agree that it must be controlled. So we have our fire inspector, Mr. Adam McCary, he's pursuing that. He already sent an email over to the plant. We had a response back from the plant immediately to Adam, copying the mayor and myself, saying that they have taken steps already to minimize the situation. They're not, they are not going to activate any of their blowers after, I believe, 7:30 at night. I don't have the email exactly in front of me, but I believe 7:30. They are minimizing the operation to five days a week in order to minimize any inconvenience. And they said that that would have been implemented immediately. Maybe that's why Mr. Foley has noted that there is minimal now. The last couple of days, there isn't as much odor emitting from the facility. But Adam is pursuing it. I'm watching it, and the DEC, Adam's been in touch with the DEC himself too, not only Mr. Foley, to try to get any, any help we can. The owner, they are committed, they tell us they are committed to help us with putting the filters and minimizing their daily operation hours in order to deal with this problem. So we have not, the minute I got the email from Mr. Foley, the mayor and I, we got Adam on it immediately with the blessing of the fire chief, and he has been dealing with it, and we had a response back from the owner. We may have to start going out at night, because before I did go with Mr. Foley at night, and we visited the factory during the day, met with their key people, and we may have to do that again. With that, if you have any comments for me?
Almond Johnson?
Are they operating four days a week or seven days a week?
No, they're telling us, the email we got on Friday is they're going to be operating four or five days a week. I don't know the exact, they said we're no longer going to be working on the weekends. So when I got the email from Mr. Sierra or the text message, according to them, you know, they weren't even working, you know, at that weekend. But he smelled it. I'm not saying, you know, so we're going to have to start possibly investing into code enforcement, going out at night and different hours to try to minimize it. But they assured us in their email that they are modifying their, their operation, and they will not be exhausting any, any odor outside their buildings after 5:30, I believe, on a daily basis.
I remember two years ago, I remember that we did have that issue, and we did reach out to DEC, but the requirement was them to change the filters more frequently. But since then, are we doing anything to minimize the situation for the DEC?
They added the new filters.
Okay.
And according to Adam, our fire inspector, the DEC, they said they can't do anything. There's nothing, there is nothing that can be done, but, you know, again, I'm putting words, and he's not here to correct me, but that's my understanding of him. However, we are dealing with the management. We're working with the management in there to make sure that doesn't happen, and obviously, they assured us that it will not happen. Some people are saying it's still happening, so we're going to have to invest by sending people, you know, overnight to check around. But it's very, it's very hard. I did some chasing, myself and Mr. Foley at night and during the day. It's kind of hard, and you have to have the right environment in there with the ambient weather condition in there, so that everything is sitting there calmly in there with the certain humidity and, and so that the smell will precipitate in the lower areas or even the higher areas, but it's going to be confined. It does not, it's not, it's not, it's not spreading all over the place because of the ambient or the weather condition.
In your power, is there anything we could do far as, we doing with CPV far as monitoring? Can we do the same thing with this place? How much is it going to cost us to do that?
I doubt that very much. We're working with them. We did not know that the order is still ongoing, because they assured us of the change in their operating pattern. We can check around with the consultant. I doubt it if consultant can, but we can. I can't say we can't.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Yes, sir.
Johnson?
Getting back to Elm Street, I know you and the mayor monitored that, and all the women, Graham Crisoon and I, tried to reassure the residents that we're moving forward.
Yes.
Is there any reason to think the project could be done by Thanksgiving?
Hopefully, if we, if we get the blessing of, tonight, hopefully, you're going to approve it, so funding is not going to be an issue. You know, I'm not being presumptuous, but I know how you guys want to, you know, you promised that you're going to do it. I know you're going to step up and, and deliver on what you promised the neighbor, not only you, all the council members and council president and the mayor. So it's a matter of just waiting to see if EFC is going to fund it or not, because if EFC includes this under their grant or under their funding mechanism, it will be zero percent interest for the taxpayers of the city of Middletown. So instead of paying ourselves or borrowing or issuing a ban, hopefully, if this qualifies under the terms and condition of the current grant by EFC, then it's a zero interest, which is great, you know, it's a great deal. So that's the only thing. Supposedly, the boss in there, he's going to be back, I think, Thursday, so hopefully, we'll hear something. The preliminary assessment from EFC is they will fund it. When they came and they visited the site with us, because they come and do an inspection, so we talked about all this. The inclination is they will fund it, but they need approval from their boss, basically.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Almond Tobin?
Quick question. I'm sorry, I didn't go to the board of estimate meeting. The, just a question about the lightning protection, the 46,000?
Yes, I did, I, I.
Surge protectors?
I did not, yeah, exactly. It's actually lightning, lightning protection in there. From my point of view, it's related to the weather, the change in, and the change in the weather, and we're getting more storms. We just, a couple of years ago, we got the steeple in here that hit, it cost us tons of money in there because of lightning. Lightning hit it, literally shattered the whole steeple. So, and then the other day, the chief called me, and he said, "Jacob, we had some issue with the, with the firehouse in there, and some of their equipment is not functioning, because they feel it was, phones were shut down and everything like that." Now, we have everything from emergency generator and standby and everything like that. We only need the lightning protection, so to make sure that, you know, this is a first responder, that this is a very sensitive installation facility. So that's why we're recommending to have it on all city facilities. Why we didn't have it all these years, I don't know, but I think the weather, the change in the weather, and more likely that we're going to get hit with lightning storms and so on, severe weather events, I think, played in my mind to bring this to your attention. Yeah.
Almond Kleiner?
Commissioner, New York Rising, I know there's supposed to be a public meeting sometime. Is there any schedule yet tentative for that?
To be honest, no. Like you said, like the mayor explained last time in there, the recommendation has been made is to pursue the West Main Bridge replacement, which is by, by the West End, the old West End Bar in there, because that, that bridge is not in very good shape. And that's where we are leaning towards. The consultant has sent an email over to New York Rising in there, because they're supposed to do the SECA, and we have not had a response yet, but we will have public hearing, yes. We will have public, public hearing, public participation, Q and A and all that.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I don't have the date for you.
Anyone else? Thank you, Jacob. Superintendent Recreation?
Good evening, folks. Summer 2018 is in the books, so that's an awesome thing. Again, thank you to our entire seasonal staff. It's about 133 people that did a wonderful job and made the city look good. They did a great job out there. After-school programs start tomorrow. So there is still space. Parents would like to register their kids. All of our fall programs, registration's going on now. Soccer and cheerleading start in a couple weeks, and added on volleyball and boxing and all the programs we have. The public can call the rec department or check out the website or the Facebook page to get all of our information. With summer over, I don't want to say we slowed down, but we become a little more sane, so you're going to see this fall, a lot of park improvements that we have coming out. I mentioned it last time I was up here. We received a grant this summer, as you all know, the Healthy Out of School Time Grant, which was helping us with the summer lunch program and spreading that into camps and into the, into our pools. We have money left over with that, and they're allowing us to make single pavilions, like you've seen at Davidge. We're going to be able to have some at Maple, and some of the parks that don't have shelters at all, like Thrall, Bennett Hill. So it's a nice little picnic area for the families. Will also give a shelter during our summer feeding programs to those parks that don't have shelter. And that money is all going to come from that grant. It's also going to replace the roof on the Lions Club Shelter that is leaking really bad. So if you've gone by Davidge, you'll see the small shelters already replaced that roof, and they're allowing us also to replace that, because the, this grant is to get families outside together, and it's also dealing with feeding. So it all fits under that criteria. So that's, that's, that's a nice thing, and it's to our benefit. Lastly, with the fall coming and the approval of some of your capitals, we are hoping to spread new playground equipment into three different playgrounds with our plan. So you're going to see sprout, the old equipment removed and replaced. Over in the back, we're talking about pulling that out, because it's very bad, but putting it in a small pavilion that could be rented for small birthday parties. We think it'll be very popular between the pool and the playground equipment, and our shelters are always at maximum use, so we need more shelters. So we're going to be doing that too, and we're hoping to get playground equipment replaced at Linden Avenue, and also replacing Bennett Hill, which is a very busy park. We lost our swings there this summer. The wood finally rotted out, and replacing that and some of the old equipment. And lastly, we're just looking forward to working with the city, as we already started, in the Davidge Park expansion. With all the programs we have going, it's so important to have more facilities. Miguel can tell you Watts Park's got football on it, baseball on it, soccer on it, and we need more space. So in that, I'm wishing football a great season. I know they're starting. Little League Fall Ball, good luck in playing the other towns. Soccer's starting, good luck to that whole group. And I kind of what the chief said, I hope a great school year for all of our kids and all of our teachers. And I know all of us here look forward to working with the school to make it great for our kids. Thank you.
Thank you. Any question for Chris? Almond Johnson?
I just had one question. I saw the sign for the Rotary Horse Show. Do we interact with that group at all?
We do. Rotary Horse Show, usually it's the third week in August, September. They're moving it to September 30th, and that is a great family day up there. They do a lot with the fish and derby and the horse and a lot of, so we work very close with Rotary, and they work close with us, and they help us with a lot of improvements up in that area and the horse ring as well.
Thank you.
Yep.
Almond Kleiner?
You had, I stopped by a little while at Watts Park Soccer Day. Would you just explain a little bit? They had a terrific turnout.
Sure. We have, we have a Middletown soccer club, but by accident, I ran into another Middletown soccer club while we were running our summer basketball league over at Manhattan Middle School. They were using that facility, and I went and talked to the gentleman. They were very organized. They just didn't have all the proper paperwork and processes in place. So we're working with them. They're, we're putting them under the city umbrella, and we run at soccer clinics. And now what we're going to do is, we'll have young kids doing clinics, but our older kids will actually be able to move into a league, which is, we lost youth soccer a long time ago, and it's deeply needed back here. This gentleman, Louis, and Felipe are incredible, has a lot of Latino families involved. We had eight teams over there two Saturdays ago. The police department showed up with a pop-up party. The relations were awesome. Quite a few of the aldermen were there. The mayor was there. What great feedback we got from that community. And now, they have access to real soccer goals and soccer balls, and we're going to be working with them, and it's just going to make soccer bigger and better for this, this area. And we're adding lacrosse too. So again, that Davidge Park expansion, we need the space. We definitely need the space. It's one of the downsides to all the great programs that are going on. So, and I'm glad the city supports us, and we greatly appreciate that, and I know the residents greatly appreciate it. We have the best rec department and park facilities around. Our park facilities are second to none, and they're only getting better.
Agreed. Thank you, Chris. City Clerk?
Just a reminder again, November, I'm sorry, September 13th on Thursday will be the primary, and all the polls in the city of Middletown will be open, 6:00 AM to 9:00 PM. If you are registered to vote in the primary, you can call us at City Hall, 346-4166, to find out where you will be voting. And that's all I have.
Any question for John? Thank you, John. Public hearings agreed with this?
Here, we have one public hearing tonight. Public hearing for proposed zoning change for 53 to 63 Anthony Street from an R1 to a UR3A. I read the public notice, a public hearing. Notice is hereby given that the city of Middletown will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, September 4th, on or as near 8:00 PM as possible, Common Council Chamber, second floor, 16 James Street, to hear any and all persons wishing to be heard on the proposed zoning change to 53 to 63 Anthony Street, Section 37, Block 6, in its lots 8, 9, and 10, from an R1 to a UR3A. Any and all persons wishing to be here will be given the opportunity to speak either for or against the proposed zoning change. The complete proposed map of the property for the change to the zone is available in the office of the common council clerk, 16 James Street, room 12. This is John Seanamchek, clerk of the common council. This was published in the Times-Sold Record on August 23rd and August 24th and on the city website.
At this time, the public hearings now open?
And for the record, you have your mailings, copy of mailings. Give those to Karen, please. Thank you.
We do. Okay, I'm Susan Glass, surveyor, and Cy Dibble and Lisa Dibble, owners of the parcel. Again, we're in the R-one district, approximately six-tenth of an acre, and we adjoin the UR-three-A to the north and south, west, south, north, and we'd like to be part of that zone.
Okay. Anyone from the public would like to address the council? Any council members have any questions? Alvin Tobin?
Just like to say for the record, Alderman, John Francois, and myself went to Anthony Street, uh, yesterday, we canvassed the area, everybody was in support of it, there was not one person that opposed it, uh, so just wanna make that part of the record.
Alvin John Francois?
The only concerns I have with the project that we have going on right now, we've been getting a lot of phone calls, the developers not starting on time, they're actually starting too early, and we've been getting a lot of complaints about that, so please, when you do start your project, I would advise you guys to start no later than seven-thirty, whatever the time is, please apply by that, because we've been getting a lot of phone calls, they're starting at six-thirty. I mean, I can understand, it's very annoying for some people. Please stay within the timeline, so.
Anyone else? Anyone from the public? Can I get a motion to close the public hearing? Alvin Massey, second by. Alvin Green, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Marks to the mayor?
Uh, good evening. A little good news for the third ward, thirty-eight West Conklin. We did receive the variance from the DEC, and for those folks who live in that area, uh, we will be tearing down, issuing the purchase order, uh, for the demolition of thirty-eight West Conklin, which is a long time coming, I guess. But, uh, all the paperwork is in order, and we did receive the variance today, so that will be, that will be coming down very shortly. Jacob touched on a couple of the resolutions, um, including the, um, the court. We do have a set of plans now, uh, so if any other members that come in council want to review the preliminary set of plans for the court, they're in my office, and we can stop in, we can start going through them. Of course, there's gonna be more work, they have to be approved by the Office of Court Administration. A lot more work to be done on it, but this is the first step with the approval of the resolution this evening. Back in January, I spoke about two things. One, alternate side of the street parking, I am now ready to put that into committee. Uh, we are also gonna do something a little bit different with, through the Economic Development Office. We have, we've used it before, Survey Monkey. So we're gonna put up a series of questions online that people can give their opinions on, uh, in regards to alternate side of the street parking. We wanna get the public's thoughts. My thoughts have been a couple of things, a couple, uh, in a couple of areas. One, along with alternate side of the street parking, year-round, will be greater enforcement for people parking on lawns. That's one of the purposes of doing it. Many homes now have multiple, uh, cars in them. The driveways in some of the older neighborhoods are not large enough to accommodate all of the drivers, and, um, so we, we wanna create, uh, an opportunity for people to park in their neighborhoods, but not on their front lawn. So with alternate side of the street parking will come enforcement of those other regulations. The second part is, is alternate side of the street will not be totally citywide. Uh, the plan is to implement it incrementally, beginning on wider streets that currently have two-side of-the-street parking. Um, it will be year-round for a couple of reasons. One, um, obviously, the, what I just mentioned about parking through the winter months, where you have to take your car off the road from two AM to six AM, but also for street sweeping. If, um, if you see in front of your house sometimes, in your neighborhood, where the marks of the street sweeper going around the car, and, uh, and the gutter stays dirty. And sometimes, you know, if we're only street sweeping every three or four weeks, you know, it's not gonna get done for another three or four weeks, and, uh, so it creates a cleaner city also. One of the ideas that, and I'll be at the committee meeting to discuss with you, but just floating it out to the public also, is for areas that have smaller, um, area lots, our cities, city lots, is the idea of creating an area where people can, um, during the snow emergencies, because there will be snow emergencies when all cars have to come off the street, um, an area where people can park their vehicles. For example, one of the city lots in the downtown area, the, um, or, uh, we can create another lot somewhere, that's what some communities have done, and they, they do it by a permit where, um, minimal, not a money-making thing, but just to keep organization, so people can register, and we know how much space we have to provide. So there's a lot more to it than just putting up a sign saying, "alternate side of the street parking." So we're ready to discuss that in committee with you, and, uh, hopefully, um, we can begin the experiment sometime this year with a few of the streets, 'cause it would be simple to do, um, right away with a few of the streets, so. Maria, hopefully within the next week, we'll have the, the survey up on, online, on the city website through John, and, uh, we would appreciate the public's feedback on what their thoughts are on, A, doing it, and what they could see the potential problems or the potential benefits of doing so. The second issue is the, uh, we'll be issuing an RFP for, uh, lawn services, and this is an appeal to landscapers, people in business. Uh, one problem that's been growing over the last couple of years, especially with the frequent rain, is, um, on abandoned properties, who are people who are not maintaining the properties, the grass is growing at a rapid pace, grass and weeds. Our part-time city crews cannot keep up with it, especially this year, with the frequency of rain, and, uh, we're just out of control. So, um, again, we, we want to, um, set up a process where we would create similar to our towing list, a, where we can utilize the private sector to come in and do the lawns, and do them in a professional manner, and make sure that the neighborhood, um, the surrounding neighborhood stays, um, in a clean condition, where, uh, especially with bank-owned properties. Now, this will require a budget line. Um, I, the number we're looking at is small, because it'll be revolving, because we, we then lean the property owner, we might not get the money back in that same fiscal year, but, um, eventually, it'll catch up, and, uh, people then will get the message. With that, again, will come, uh, under our current system, we do send out notices, and it's gotta be a five-day notice, and the process drags out, and we get repeat offenders. Um, this will be, uh, again, a system where a person gets a warning once during the, at the, when the first time they're a violator, and then the second or third time, whatever we decide, um, it, it won't require a warning, it'll require just us going out and cutting the high grass. I don't mean like six or eight-inch grass, I'm talking where, you've all seen it in your neighborhoods, um, that where you have a couple homeowners or a couple vacant properties, or a couple bank-owned properties that are not maintained. So we feel it's gonna be, um, a much cleaner, uh, city if we do it this way, and, um, this summer, probably the number one complaint that my office received was somebody in the neighborhood not cutting their lawn. So I think it'll address it. Uh, we, Jacob's department cannot physically keep up on it, um, we, we didn't have enough people, enough part-timers during the summer, uh, and, um, we just couldn't do it. Uh, so, uh, our apologies to, uh, to some who had to suffer with the high grass in their neighborhoods, but, uh, next year, it will be, um, much better. In discussing it with, um, Alderman Massey today, he had, for probably the first time in maybe eight years, a pretty decent idea, that we should also look at, including snow removal, uh, for the sidewalks that do not have, um, you know, that are not getting shoveled, and both commercial and residential, and looking at the same concept of doing it throughout the winter months. So, uh, we're ready to discuss it, whatever committee you put it in, Mr., uh, Mr. President, I'd be willing to attend the meeting and make the presentation, uh, to the committee meeting, or to the committee chair and the committee members. Elm Street, um, hopefully you'll vote on it tonight, I'm sure you'll fund it tonight. Uh, Jacob and I did walk up in that neighborhood, um, a few, quite a few weeks ago, and assured the neighbors that we would, as a city, do the right thing, uh, for that neighborhood. I mean, they've had severe inconvenience, especially the dead-end part, and where they actually had to drive down the rail line to get to their houses, uh, for, for a short while. So, um, as you know, initially, it was the sewer line work, it's very deep and very dangerous work, uh, much more complicated than we believed, um, but while we're there, we also wanna do a replacement of the water line, so that we don't have to inconvenience people in that neighborhood again. Uh, with that, will come new sidewalks and new blacktop on their, on their neighborhoods, so hopefully, your suggestion of trying to get it done by, or Kate's suggestion, whoever it was, uh, get it done by Thanksgiving.
It was going for Thanksgiving, but I'll do Christmas.
You'll do Christmas, alright. Uh, we'll, we'll be able to accomplish that, um, with some cooperation from, uh, the EFC, and, and quite possibly, if we funded it, maybe it's eligible to use our own funds and be reimbursed by the EFC, but we will look into it, make sure that, uh, if, if we're able to do it, um, very quickly, we'll, um, I think all the people up there will be happy. And I do have a, um, a executive session for contract negotiations if it's needed, and if you don't mind, I'll speak on the local law tonight, 'cause Alex isn't here, rather than come back up for the local law. Over the last few years, we've had quite a few litigations in our tax sale process. What we're trying to do is to try to streamline it, so that we can, we've won them all, but to streamline it to, to do two things. One, to try to avoid future litigation, and number two, is to give more notice. So what we're doing in this local law is giving additional notice, uh, to people and to any lien holder, um, that's, um, that's out there, that we can make sure that, uh, we can try to avoid future litigation. Uh, the King Street Building was a perfect example, where we fought that in court for about three years, I think. So if we can avoid a three-year court battle, then, then it makes sense. But it's recommended by Corporation Counsel Smith, and he's asked for your support. I don't believe there's a vote on it tonight, I think it's just the reading of the, uh, local law, but he wanted me to convey that message to you. Any questions?
Mayor, Alvin Johnson?
I'm interested in the timelines, Mr. Mayor. Courthouse, two years?
Before it opens?
Yes.
Well, Office of Court Administration, we believe will be very happy with the plan that's submitted. Right now, it's a matter of funding. Um, the, um, you know, we have an additional five or six hundred thousand left over from the grant through Aileen Gunther, Assemblywoman Gunther, uh, for the purchase of the property. Um, this project will run anywheres up to, close to five million dollars. So, um, depending upon the state's, um, willingness to give us some funding, we can accommodate more of their needs. If not, our mandate is to provide a second court. Uh, we believe it's in the best interest of the city and the Office of Court Administration to consolidate them both in one spot, which would be the new court area. Um, it's in our best interest, because it frees up the police station to expand it to the court area. Um, it also allows, in the court's best interest, to consolidate, to have one central security area. Right now, they're operating security here on a temporary basis and security in the court, so, um, but the new, the criteria for new courts, um, is pretty stiff and very expensive. Um, we wanna do it right, we wanna do it safe, we wanna make it secure, um, and we wanna accommodate as much of the state's needs as possible, so we're gonna be looking to them for some funding, especially in light of the fact that the cities are now gonna be used for the weekend arraignments and our late-night arraignments under the new, um, the new law regarding, uh, representation by both the DA's office and the, uh, legal aid and every, uh, with child detention facility. And the three cities under the current plan are gonna be the ones that are court, the courts may be operating seven days a week in some manner. So, uh, we're gonna be working with the state to see if there's any funding opportunities, and, um, we can give them what they want. If not, then we'll have to scale the project back, um, to maybe a two-and-a-half to three million dollar project, but we're, we're hoping that we'll be able to work it out with them.
Three years.
I would say we would get an answer on funding before the end of the year, and we can bid probably in the spring, because that, they're doing bid documents, once we, you know, the, the layout's there, um, and we can probably start construction next year. Yeah.
Sounds good, thank you.
Alvin McCliner?
Thank you. Um, Mayor, I congratulate you on the idea for, uh, like landscapers, because, uh, I mentioned to Commissioner Twill two things that I'd like to see in the budget, and, because by the time it gets to us, we can only agree with it or reduce it, we can't add any.
But you're always at the Board of SVU, especially you, you're always there, and we welcome your opinion.
Okay. Um, but the one I had mentioned was more money for lot crews, so you're, you're dealing with that a different way, and I think it'll be effective way. And the other thing along that same line I would mention would be, um, tree maintenance, because it doesn't ever really seem to be in the budget, but we know there are a lot of things that need taking care of, so I'd, I'd like to see that looked at.
Yeah, I know we've had some success with the, obtaining the grants, but the management of those grants and the recording, the, um, this may possibly free up some time within the DPW or the Parks Department to assist in the grant management of the, of the tree inventory. Um, I, I know the parks, Chris is here, she can speak to it, and as much as she's a tree lover, and, uh, John, the Parks guy, uh, they're just overwhelmed with, um, staffing, uh, staffing needs. You know, we're, we're expanding parks, we're expanding opportunities and, uh, with, as we call it, Rodriguez Field over there, Pilgrim's Estates and area, but we're, uh, I see the need for it.
Yeah.
And hopefully, we'll be, can address it in some manner. It will not be a full-time worker, uh, which some communities actually have, but, um, there's a possibility that we can get someone in to assist the Shade Day Committee in managing that grant and creating that inventory.
Okay, very good. And very quickly, um, the Heritage Trail, uh, I spoke to legislator Paduke, because I was asking, I know it was supposed to go back to the legislature, but it's not on the agenda, and he said that hopefully, you were gonna have a meeting, maybe tomorrow, uh, about trying to get it.
Yes.
By, by consent or whatever, to get it placed on the agenda, 'cause I don't like the idea of waiting till October, if it, if it needs to go to the legislature, because we're just too close.
Running out of time. I agree, and that's the purpose of the meeting with, um, Alderman, uh, Alderman, uh, Alder, oh, I'm gonna say it again. County legislator Sierra, uh, legislator Paduke are arranging a meeting with the, um...
Mr. Bresch.
Mr. Bresch.
Yeah.
And the idea is, uh, what we've been trying to urge them to do, is to separate the AMES dealings from the legislative, uh, from the Heritage Trail contract, and then they can always amend it at some point later on. We want the project to be signed, sealed, and, um, put out the bid.
Yes.
Uh, we are meeting, um, in the very near future, myself and Jacob with the DEC, um, and the SECRE, I think you have a resolution tonight, if I'm not mistaken, yes?
Yes.
To approve the SECRE for the Box Culvert.
The Culvert.
So from our, our end, everything is moving ahead.
Okay.
Um, so, uh, our question to the county is, is it possible for you to separate these two? And then, when your AMES, AMES has to be done by the end of October, otherwise, AMES is out of here. AMES is, um, their, uh, their SECRE runs out at November first, and they would have to start the whole process over. So that's, um, that's a done deal, that it will be completed. Everyone wants it done, the county, the state, the city, uh, town of Goshen, so everyone's working towards that goal. But if it takes, in order to move the trail portion along quicker, if it takes separating the two, if it's doable, then that's what we're gonna encourage Mr. Bresch to hopefully do, and, uh, hopefully, the county will go along with it. But Paduke and Sierra are on top of it, and we'll be meeting sometime on Wednesday.
Okay, thank you.
Alright.
Anyone else?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Report of Alderman, Alderman Burr.
Uh, yeah, I'd just like to thank Chris and John and all their staff for a great summer season, well, successful, everything looked to go nice and smoothly, thank you.
Alvin John Francois?
Yes, I'd also like to take the time to thank Chris for entertaining, uh, our youth over the summer. You did a wonderful job, you and your staff, keeping everybody busy at the, on most of the parks that we have in this area. And also, with the police chief, thank you for, and your staff for keeping us safe this summer, everything went pretty good. And, uh, DPW Commissioner, I wanna also thank you and your staff for working under the hardest condition over the summer. You had a successful project, you actually, your department... You actually, your department actually paved new road and, and also, what do you call, what's the word that I could use? The mill, 24, 24 roads, actually. That was a very successful project. So I want to thank you and your staff for doing a wonderful job in the complete condition. And also Maria, I'd like to thank you for keeping our seniors and all the neighbors entertained for the summer. Thank you very much, everybody.
Alderman Kleiner.
Thank you. Our constituents' meeting for the second ward will be next Monday and believe that's the 10th. And Commissioner Toewill has graciously agreed to come to our meeting, so we will have him there for your questions first and, and let him go and then move on to other things. And we, we're over for the ribbon cutting, for the bowling with footballs. It's, it's quite a, it's quite an operation and I do want to say for the record that Mr. Massey did win his match. Thank you.
Alderman Krasniewski.
Congratulations, Mr. Massey. I just wanted to, for scheduling business, next week, on Tuesday at 7:00 PM, the Neighborhood Watch will be meeting in this room. We did not have a meeting in August, but we will be reconvening next week. As for school, which starts tomorrow, I have four kids headed off this year, finally all four. And I just wish our kids, our students, our teachers and staff a safe and happy year this year. Brink, I don't know what to say. I mean, another successful summer. This after-school programming, it's amazing. So I'm really proud of our rec department, the people who work for it that make it so successful. My thanks to them and the commission members as well. So I look forward to a fun fall. I know we have a lot of activities planned, both with the fire department and the police department and rec working together. So there's a lot for families to do. Just check out the website and see. And that's all I have. Have a good night.
Alderman Johnson.
I will echo the kudos to the Park and Recs Department for a healthy and happy summer. Thank you.
Alderman Green.
Yeah, I'll echo that as well. It was a wonderful summer in the city. Had a great time at everything, outdoor movies, concerts. It was a blast with just every department in full steam. Look forward to seeing everyone at our constituents' meeting on the 10th that Alderman Kleiner mentioned. The soccer event that was held that Alderman Kleiner mentioned before, phenomenal. Great to see everybody out enjoying it, police department, fire department, rec staff looked like they were having a blast working together. That's always a good thing to see. And the gentleman and his crew running the whole event were just, he was a phenomenal person to speak to and to hear from. Back to school again, to echo what the chief said, take it slow, especially on the side roads and the back roads, not even, not only the main ones because you never know who could run out from behind a car and we don't want to see anything bad happen. We want everyone to be all smiles. So good luck to the students, teachers and staff. Thanks.
Alderman Tobin.
Ditto on the Parks Department. I go around everybody, there's raves about all the programs that are available to our youth in our community and especially the new expansion, the possibility of expanding into the reservoir area. And I just want to encourage everybody to vote on September 13th if you're, if you can. Democracy is a participation sport. There's a lot of different primaries from the governor on, governor on down, so just encourage everybody to get out and vote. It's on Thursday, which is usually on Tuesday, so it's a little different, different day, but same voting locations. Thank you.
Alderman Massey.
This is for anyone that's taking the police exam or knows of anyone that's taking the police exam on the 7th, excuse me, on the 15th, which is a week from Saturday. I personally put the 500 letters in the mail today. Please stop calling the office. They're in the mail. If by some chance you don't get it or you know someone that's supposed to be taking the exam, they don't get their letter of admission by Friday, Monday start reaching out. But the letters are definitely in the mail and, and hopefully you'll get them tomorrow or the next day and everyone will be happy and all. Good luck to everyone and I'll see you all on the 15th.
Tonight, there was a comment made for the good of the city. I don't like to address people, but people might know, I was, wanted Mr. Fody's advocate all the time to call him. Jacob could attest to this. Anytime we had an issue with Mr. Fody or, or we had an issue with our water mains, we would call Mr. Fody. He made a comment on the way out and I got, my phone was blowing up and was like, look at the, the comment that he made after. And it wasn't until I got a text message from one of my kids and the kids in this room, I want to apologize for him being unprofessional as a former city employee and coming here for the good of the city making that comment. It's uncalled for and it's, it doesn't need to. You can say whatever you want to say about me or any council members. You have four minutes. Come to the council, address your issue. We will hear your issue and then move on. I know every couple of months we get somebody that always challenges us, but it's done. Four minutes, it was way over four minutes. So again, I apologize to the kids in this room and everybody watching because I'm getting the text message how unprofessional he was. New business.
We have a resolution sponsored by Alderman Jean Francois to amend the city code, chapter 460, Vehicles and Traffic, section 460-28, Handicap Permits, to add two new permits at 13 and 1/2 Grant Street and 13, I'm sorry, 11 Benel Place.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Jean, Jean Francois, seconded by Alderman Kleiner.
Any discussion? Roll.
Graham Krasniewski.
Aye.
Tobin.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Jean Francois.
Aye.
Burr.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Burr to approve a boundary survey and provide topography on 25 to 31 South Street for the new courthouse.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Burr, seconded by Alderman Johnson. Any discussion? Roll.
Graham Krasniewski.
Aye.
Tobin.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Jean Francois.
Aye.
Burr.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Jean Francois to approve a change order, number two, for the black dirt sanitary sewer replacement project and transfer $377,000 from the sewer fund balance for the CO.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Jean Francois, seconded by Alderman Krasniewski. Any discussion? Roll.
Graham Krasniewski.
Aye.
Tobin.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Jean Francois.
Aye.
Burr.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey to transfer from the sewer fund balance the amount of $128,047 due to a spreadsheet error provided by capital market sewer fund interest charges that were underestimated for the 2018 budget.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey, seconded by Alderman Burr. Any discussion? Roll.
Graham Krasniewski.
Aye.
Tobin.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Jean Francois.
Aye.
Burr.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey to transfer from the sewer fund balance the amount of $128,047 due to a spreadsheet error provided by capital market sewer fund interest charges that were underestimated for the 2018 budget.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey, seconded by Alderman Burr. Any discussion? Roll.
Graham Krasniewski.
Aye.
Tobin.
Aye.
Kleiner.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Jean Francois.
Aye.
Burr.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Massey.
No.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Resolution passes. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Jean Francois to authorize the treasurer to transfer $46,791 from the general fund balance to install lighting protection throughout the city-owned buildings.